We start with a roll call.
Roberto Paratori.
Aziz Essam.
Nora Drummond.
Rocco Lamitone.
Art Mahoney.
May I ask everyone to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, created just for us.
Thank you, everyone. All right, upcoming meetings Tuesday, November 21st and Tuesday, January 23rd. This year, our fourth Tuesday would fall on December 26th, so when we adopted the calendar, we agreed there would be no December meeting unless there was some urgent matter that needed our attention, but yes.
One question, January 23rd, 2024.
Oh, yeah, 2024. See? There we go. But to do that, we also need to adopt the schedule of meetings for 2024. Right, and so, again, recognizing December next year will be Christmas Eve, December 24th, we're not going to suggest a meeting in December, so. So do I have, this is, these are all the fourth Tuesdays, they should be all okay here. If there's a primary or anything like that, we'll deal with that. We may have to change and move to an alternate location maybe in June, we'll see. Do I have a motion to adopt the calendar of our 2024 meetings?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. All right, we do have one set of minutes to approve from the meeting of September 26th. Very, very few amendments, again, thank you very much, Julie, for, you know, catching it all. So do I have a motion to approve the minutes of September with the very few amendments that were?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, the next meeting will be November. We could get snow in November, so I always start this time of year talking about this snow policy. In the event that you are scheduled to come to our meeting in just, in November, and it's snowing and town hall is closed, the meeting is canceled. It is not postponed, it's just canceled, and that would mean that the next meeting would then be our meeting in January. So if you're on for a public hearing or something gets, you know, if you're still here with us, working with us, you're meeting and we have snow that day, it's not online or anything like that, it would be just moved to January, okay? So I just want to be clear on that, but their notice goes, gets published somewhere, right? Yeah, and on the town website, it would be up there as well. Yeah, that's always the best way to check and see. So the way the meetings works is the first part of our meetings are public hearings. These are applications that this board has already had a chance to review. We then notice the neighbors to get any opinions or any information we should be aware of from neighbors. So that's the first part of the meeting, and then the last part is we have one application on for review, which is an application that we have not had the opportunity to check out yet. So with that being said, item number one, Appeal 4052 Panty Industry, 256 Woodmont Road, Hope Junction, requesting a special permit in order to bring in 2,557 additional cubic yards of fill for a total of 2,181 new cubic yards after 375 per year for 2022 and '23 pursuant to Section 194-75 of the zoning ordinance. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Just again, for the record, this was re-noticed, okay? There, the town engineer has now had an opportunity, the applicant has a new engineer on board. Brian, I'm assuming that's you, since you're now here?
That's me.
And they've been working through all the numbers, they, I believe you've now met with the neighbors, so if you can take us, fill us in from, from what's going on, okay?
Right, so we were retained to try to get this project in a forward direction, and with that, we had a meeting with the town engineer on September 22nd, and we were on site, and we witnessed the condition of the site and what needed to be revised on a plan and from a construction standpoint. So obviously, there was fill brought into the site, and there's an existing house on the site, there's existing drainage on the site.
Well, there's a new house being constructed on the site.
New house, right. Still looking for a CO, so we're trying to get the, the site to a spot where we can obtain a CO. There was a 24-inch drainage pipe that was installed that captures some of the runoff from Woodmont Road. The method of installation was questionable, so within our plan set, and in our construction notes, the pipe will be installed per town highway specifications. With that, there was a spring that was up, located toward Woodmont Road that was draining onto the site. We detailed a curtain drain to be installed, and with that curtain drain wrapping around the driveway, we also took the driveway and we pitched it north so that any runoff that comes across the front yard and from the driveway is directed in a northerly direction away from our southerly neighbor who's downhill from us. There's an existing catch basin that's actually in the center of the driveway turnaround, and what we did in our current plan is we moved that catch basin further up into the property, and we created a low spot so that when the water comes from the driveway and across the front yard, it's captured in that catch basin, and it actually captures the runoff from the driveway turnaround area, and then we direct that toward the, the lower spot in the rear yard.
So when you're saying you've moved it, you're proposing that these things be moved in your plan?
Right.
Nothing's happened out on site?
So it's, I don't know if anything's happened out on site yet. Looking and dealing with the town engineer, there were certain permissions given to the applicant to, to do remediative actions to restore sediment erosion controls. We did have a, a small authorization to do that, but as far as any major drainage improvements, we did identify that some things could be moved, like the, the 24-inch pipe, things of that nature, and coordinate that with the highway department, so there's a set of eyes on there.
Okay.
So there has been, I believe, some activity on site, but it was authorized by the town engineer and is, is being underseen by the, by the highway department to make sure it's going in correctly. So specific to that yard drain component, I don't know if that's been touched yet, but it has been identified to be moved away from that driveway turnaround area, and what that allows us to do again is to control that runoff from dumping down onto our neighbor's property where the garage is.
You had an opportunity to see, assess the damage and the, what really happened next door with the neighbor?
Yeah.
Okay.
And, and that's why, if you look at our plan, and we'll go into detail to give the public an idea of what's going on, obviously, we're, there is a substantial watershed that drains through our property, and there is a ravine in the backyard, and we do have downhill neighbors that we're sensitive of. So in our site visit, we did, we discussed having like a dissipation basin at the rear yard within the confines of our property, so that when that water does exit that 24-inch pipe, and we do have runoff coming from our site, that there is an area of, of ponding that we can slow that velocity down and then discharge it through a riprap pad that it's spread out and it continues down that ravine, but we try to control and spread and, and discharge that at a slightly slower rate so that we're not creating a situation where we have erosion issues. With that, we also showed that we're going to bring, bring in some topsoil material so we can ensure that we get some vegetation to grow on, on the rear of the, of the hillside that we're, that we're grading. The material now, it doesn't have much organic compounds to it, so what we did is, in our analysis, we estimated, obviously, what was brought into the site to current day, and that was verified through an ASBIL that we had performed. And what we're, what we're asking the board is to have the ability to come in and bring in about 300 yards of topsoil so that we can cover that backyard. And as soon as we place that topsoil material, we put like a jute mesh over it, because we do have, you know, steep slopes in the backyard there, so that we can limit any kind of erosion once it's placed. And that would, obviously, it would allow grass to grow at a, at a, at a faster rate. The hope is, you know, we spent a lot of time with this plan detailing mitigative measures that we could kind of catch the season here. We do have some warm, some warm days still left, but the idea was to, to bring in that topsoil, put the jute mesh over it, and just do a, a quick germinating seed on it to try to see if we get some grass to grow before the winter hits. In addition to that, we do have, there's a, there's a boulder rock wall that's near the driveway turnaround area, and speaking to Scott, he suggested we try to put in a curtain drain along the edge of that rock wall, so if there is any runoff that does make its way through that rock wall, that the curtain drain would pick it up and then divert it back into our property. We detailed that on the plan. And above that rock wall, we expanded the driveway turnaround area so that we can have a complete vehicle turnaround movement.
Okay.
And with that, to protect the neighbor from any traffic spilling over, if it's slippery out or if there's snow on the property, we've put a heavy guardrail fence around, heavy timber guide rail around that turnaround area so that it would prevent, if there was a snow condition or an ice condition, that it would prevent a car from going past that, that turnaround area. Looking at the back of the house, there's a small rear yard that we have, and because we do have slopes that are two-on-one, three-on-one, it was suggested that we put up a split-rail fence to prevent, you know, obviously, kids or anybody going down that slope, just to have additional protection on that slope. I'm thinking, with, with all of those improvements, we did make a submission to the town. I know it's been under review by the town engineer. I think a majority of the concerns by the town engineer were resolved. There's a couple dot the i's, cross the t's, things that we have to do. But I think from a mitigation standpoint, by us providing that dissipation basin at, at the base of that, that 24-inch pipe, it's really going to slow down the velocities based upon, you know, the drainage analysis that we did. So there, there was a significant amount of work that was done, and again, we're just trying to correct a problem that is on site.
So two questions. It's being designed for what year?
Hundred-year storm.
Hundred-year storm?
Hundred-year, yeah, yeah. Typically, any kind of drainage design and riprap design is based upon a 10-year storm.
Right.
With this, we did a hundred-year storm.
I would hope the neighbor can understand is that we're making sure this is going to be a more significant, it's going to be able to handle a more significant storm.
Yeah.
Okay, and the second is, I didn't hear anything about making any restoration of the neighbor's property.
We'd like to meet with the neighbor and, and work that out with the neighbor. Any kind of restoration would be on the table.
All right, but that is included in the, the builder understands he's got to take care of that because?
Right.
It was his work that was done already that created the damage, okay?
We want to be friendly to our neighbors, and we will work with the neighbor directly.
Okay.
I haven't had that discussion yet with the neighbor. Everything we've done right now has been on site.
Well, he's hearing you.
No. I'm sure we'll be speaking.
He's hearing you, okay. So, so the town engineer has now had the opportunity to review it. There's a little issue about whether, what, what's the right set of numbers, I think, at this point, but we're also recognizing that 2024 is right around the corner, so in the event that you actually need a little bit more fill, you're allowed technically another 375 cubic yards in 2024. Again, it has to be totally subject to, you know, engineer's review. You're not going to be able, you're not going to close this out before the end of the year.
Right.
So it's going to go into next year anyway. All right, so comments or questions from board members?
From what I understand, you want us to make a decision on this application?
The town engineer has essentially, and Scott, Brian have, have signed off that they believe it's ready, and there, in the resolution itself is levels of protection and levels of review, but again, we've got to make sure that, that we, that the neighbor hears this and understands, you know, what's, what will, what his protection and, and, you know, feedback will be going forward.
So once we sign off, or once we, let's say, grant this appeal, so what happens in 2024 when the, when you can, are you going to bring it independently, or are you going to work with the town engineer?
You would have to work with the town engineer.
Yeah, I mean, this, this project directly revolves around the, our interaction with the building department, and the belt and suspenders on this is ultimately a CO has to be issued.
Okay.
And so that's really the, you know, if we, if we really are serious about this, and we want to get a CO on the dwelling, you know, there's certain things that have to be done, and.
Right.
A CO can't be issued until the building inspector and town engineer are satisfied.
Correct, because this application started way back in February of this year.
Yeah.
And so.
Understood, and we, we, our office, just to give you perspective, we, we were engaged to come out and take a look at the site at the third week of, actually, the third week of September, and by the fourth week of September, you know, we were already on site with the town engineer, and we already had an ASBIL survey of the conditions. So the applicant is aware of what needs to be done, and he did take those steps to get that ASBIL survey, he did put a rush on it because we had a ZBA deadline.
Right.
So, you know, we're, I'm trying, I know how the process works here, and obviously, we have to get you information, and it has to be accurate, so he, he understands that process, and we're trying to make, we're trying to correct a wrong here.
And so is your assessment of the cubic yards already brought in on site accurate with what our town engineer is thinking?
Right, so what we did is, just to give you an idea of how it works, is we had an ASBIL condition, and we have a Noco CAD, and then we had the surveyor go out there and take an ASBIL condition of elevations out there. We compare the two surfaces, right? So I think in my letter, there was a hair over 2,200 yards that we estimated that was brought in on site. If you look at my grading plan, you'll show that I showed grading along that whole fill section there, and those grading contours are pushed out a little bit. That additional fill that we're asking for, that 319, that's the area of topsoil and regrading that we think is going to be sufficient to give us a sufficient amount of, of room for, for grass to grow and, and to shape it so it, so the yard actually looks presentable. I just, we don't want to put a Band-Aid on it, but we wanted to kind of, you know, blend in with the character of the neighborhood, so I'm confident those numbers work. We ran it on CAD, and I think Barton and LaJoyce also verified our numbers through their analysis.
And we need to be certain that whoever buys this house understands they can't just do what they want there. So, all right, other comments or questions from board members?
I mean, I was at the site, and it, it is, I mean, it's been sitting there for six, eight months, and so, I mean, so as long as, you know, the applicant understands that this is, has taken so long to reach this point that they have to really work with it, with the town, essentially.
I think we have their attention.
Okay.
You definitely have their attention.
So I'm, I'm, I'm okay with this now.
I'm, I'm familiar with the property, so I don't have any more questions. No questions.
Okay. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak for or against? Come on up. I don't know if you've had an opportunity to review the file.
I have.
You have, good.
Yes, up until the comments from.
Start with your name, just for the record.
Scott Lombardo.
The next-door neighbor.
Two, yeah, next-door neighbor. I've reviewed the comments up until August 24th, I believe. I did not receive anything in my FOIL request after that.
Okay. When was your FOIL request submitted?
September 28th.
28th.
So we just, we just picked it up.
That might have been, if you retained the fourth week or third or fourth week of September and then met on site, nothing was probably written up after that.
Right, so we, we met on site on the 26th, and I think there's.
Brian, can you just come to the.
Yeah, Brian, come to the mic, sorry.
Thank you.
So I'm just trying to get you some clarifications.
Right, so we met on site on the 26th, was a Tuesday, and I think the submission deadline was on the following Monday, right? So that would be.
October 2nd.
2nd.
1st.
1st.
Your, your submission.
October 2nd, October 3rd was a Tuesday.
Right, so that's, that may be where the information is.
Okay, I just have a couple, couple of questions.
Sure.
Number one, they, they did put like a footing drain in front of the boulders. On the plans that we got, it's supposed to be one foot wide, two foot deep with a six-inch pipe perforated.
Okay.
They dug it with a shovel and a pickaxe. There's no way it's two foot deep, because I know the area, I've been there since 1970. Okay, it should have been done with a machine and done properly. The stone is up above where.
When was this work done?
This is for the, the footing drain that they said they were going to, that's going to catch whatever water comes.
I know, but when was it done? Again, I'm trying to get at whether the new engineer is on board or whether it was done.
I don't have the exact date. It was done within the past few weeks.
Oh. Okay.
And just let me finish what I have to say.
Go ahead, go ahead.
The, the rock for the footing drain is up above ground level. So now, whatever water comes over the boulders is going to now push the rest of that rock into our property. It, it just, it wasn't done properly.
Okay.
The boulders, are they going to fill the boulders with anything? Because as you can, as we've submitted picture and picture and picture, all the runoff continues to run down through, I mean, there's spaces this big in between all the boulders, and all the runoff just continues to, to run down. Right now, it's being caught by the black fabric, but soon as that fabric's gone, it's going to continue to run down in front of our shed, down, you know, where we have the garden or had the garden, we had to take the whole garden out because it was ruined.
Okay.
So we would like, we'd like a real retaining wall. Instead of these boulders that lets all the sediment come down through, we'd like a real footing drain that's done properly, not by a pickaxe and a shovel. It's not done right. You guys addressed, you know, damaged our yard, we appreciate that very much. We will talk to, you know, whoever we have to, because Mr. Panty has never reached out to us once. It's always, oh, we'll have him, you know, have somebody call us. That's not our job. You did the damage, not us, so he should be reaching out to us. But like I said, the main thing is, the retaining wall is, is got to be done correct, and the footing drain's got to be done correct, and there should be some type of swell in there to prevent anything from coming down to our property.
And directed.
And none of that's been done.
Okay.
So that, that's our main concerns. Do you have anything else?
I would just like clarification on.
You got to come to the microphone and identify yourself, please.
Nicole Leno, also next-door neighbor, I'm the owner of the property. I would just like clarification on that you're only asking for topsoil to be brought in, or are you asking for more fill to be brought in? Because I'm, I'm not clear on from what I read from our FOIL request to what was just said, so I would just like clarification on that.
Okay.
Yeah. Nope, that's it, yeah.
All right, so let's have Brian come back to the microphone.
Okay, thank you.
You guys can sit right there if you need to.
All right, yeah, so I think what, to make it, to make this right.
Yeah, let's be clear about this footing drain that was installed.
To make this right, there was supposed to be coordination with you and the contractor.
Not lost.
Obviously, there wasn't, so now I'm going to make it right. So we're going to, obviously, speak after the meeting, we're going to exchange information, but the thought process was, if, if you, because of the location of the wall, the proximity of the property line, where the footing drain is, is supposed to be going, in order to do it right, we probably have to access your property. Would you be allowing and willing us, willing for the contractor, I think I should be there too while it goes in, to access your property, put it in right? We'd probably do it with a small mini excavator, nothing big, we want to be a big track mounted, but some, like a little rubber, like 40 series.
That's a conversation that we can have.
Yeah.
My husband's not here, who's also an owner, so we can all sit down.
Yeah, that's the right way to do it. That way, we're getting proper death, we're cutting off the water that's coming through that wall.
Being dug to the proper specifications?
Right, right, and I, and I think probably, like, again, like the belt and suspenders on this is probably offer certification by a PE that's installed correctly, right? I think that would satisfy, it would give them a, a level of protection, to give the building department something to, you know, hang their hat on. So we would offer that as, as part of the mitigation. As far as the retaining wall goes, I do agree, the material that is there is unknown. I did see the voids. You can see how water does get down through there. In our submission, I put a recommendation is, I, I can't offer any kind of certification or anything on the wall because I didn't see it go in, and also, you can see the voids. So we, what we asked for is while they're doing the restorative action, that we peel away that top layer of wall, we see what's underneath there, and if, if there is something salvageable coming, coming up with an engineered plan, if there's not, we would defer to, you know, a, a wall.
I can tell you, we have pictures.
Yeah, so it's sound.
That would be helpful for Brian to see that.
That would be helpful to me, because I didn't see it.
Yeah, talk.
So I think the retaining wall, we, there's, there's an avenue to solve it. The applicant knows it is what it is, so it's going to be our recommendation.
So the issue with the boulders is reasonable, that runoff is still getting, still getting through there, and it's in your, your expectation is it will still be addressed?
Yeah, it'll be addressed. The footing drain has to go into the proper death, it offers a, a cutoff. I, I, I don't know why we didn't ask the neighbor for permission, but regardless, we are talking now, and we'll make sure that it does go in correctly, and then we'll address the wall.
Okay.
And the wall is going to be over four feet, so it will be an engineered design, and with the wall installation, there's a series of inspections that we do, and we offer certification to the town that it was installed correctly. I think, I think with the pitching, the pitching, again, with the pitching of the driveway away from the neighbors, and we capture that, and we have that area asphalt, it'll also cut off any water that kind of creeps underneath that, that wall right now. So there's a couple different layers of protection I think we can, we can offer you.
And so the swell that they were also talking about is not going to be necessary because these other protections are going to be in place?
Yeah, I, I think once we get the driveway paved and we move that driveway catch basin further into the property and we create that low spot, now we're, we're taking all of that water, we're capturing it, and we're getting it to the back.
Right, but that's a good point. Are they actually going to be paving the driveway now or putting just a bond up because they're not paving it?
I think.
Your plan calls for it to be paved?
It, it has to be paved, that's, that's the plan, that's the remediative action to protect the neighbors.
Again, it's important for the neighbors and for us to know that, that's part of the plan.
Yep.
Okay. Back to the microphone, please, sorry.
I got to answer the, the fill question.
Okay.
So what we calculated was there's 2,238 yards of material that was brought into site currently, that sits there. What we're recommending is to bring in another 319 cubic yards of topsoil material so that we can actually, we can take what's there, we can blend it smooth, so it's not such an eyesore, and then basically cap it with some topsoil, and then once that topsoil goes down, we have like, it's called jute mesh mats that come in rolls, and we just roll them down, and we actually staple them into the hill so that when it does rain, the wall, the topsoil that was placed doesn't migrate down. So I don't anticipate any more topsoil than that coming in. We were fairly conservative with our estimate because we didn't want to come back again, but I, I, that's, I, I think for that, that rear property section, you know, 300 yards is, is a healthy amount that will establish vegetation.
Okay.
And so there was a septic pipe, there was some, like, some of the pictures that you showed us showed some not good construction.
Okay, the, the fill that's there, the 2,200 yards is which, what I calculated just by measurements and the elevations, is all concrete block and debris from houses. We don't, we have no idea where that came from.
Right.
Is there any type of certification that that's not going to damage? I mean, it, it's running it down the stream, you know, which has been a stream there forever. We don't know what this fill is. Is, you see, we're supposed to provide fill tickets and where it came from, that was, you know, the board's recommendation months ago, haven't seen any of that. And if, right now, we're dealing with an elevation of between 17 and 20 feet difference between their driveway and my property or our property in a matter of 30 feet. It's all that water and runoff, I mean, once he sells this house, what happens then? If this isn't corrected, then I got to go after the people who just bought this poor house? I mean, I just, I'm just curious, and what do we do?
Brian?
Well, I think, I think ultimately, with this application and.
Let's talk about the fill to begin with. So the fill that was brought in, have you had a chance to look at what the fill was? See any of the tickets, where it came from, what it is?
We, I wasn't involved in that discussion, and that, that question wasn't posed to our office, so specific to.
So you can't address that?
I can't address it because we weren't involved and we weren't asked. We, we just responded to what was asked of us. I did see it, you are right, it, there's concrete debris, it's brick veneer, it's concrete chunks, it's a mixture of organic material, some gravel. Yeah, it's specific to where it came from, I don't know. It's up to the board on how they, if, if there was previous guidance given to the applicant on, on, on what the board.
Again, it's going to go back to the town engineer.
Okay.
It's going to be up to the engineering department to determine if it's appropriate fill or not.
Okay, well, again, the, to the town attorney that was here when we first started coming, said there was never a permit ever issued for.
Right.
That type of fill in East Fishville at all.[1701.41]
Right.
So I'm just wondering-
Again, it's gotten, gotten the attention of the town engineer and all we can do is leave it in the hands of the town engineer.
Okay, well, we have heard that it's permitted for itself.
Well, because he's now waiting for this board to take action, okay? Again, this is the public forum for them, for us all to be reasonable about it and hear from you.
I'm just trying to-
Yep, that's fine. And the second part, oh, any recourse after he sells the house?
Right, so I think with this application being very unique, this all comes down to proper notation and coordination with the building department. Ultimately, the belt and suspenders on this is the CO. So I think, I think there needs to be a level of oversight with the building department, which there is. And I think the town engineer will be very involved with the final application. I have a feeling a CO won't be issued until everyone is extremely comfortable with what's been done on site and a CO won't be issued until, I guarantee you'll be asked, you know, if you've taken a look at the site before a CO is issued, just because of how sensitive it is. All I can say is the town is the ultimate controller of if it follows the approved plan. And, you know, we've worked with the billing department and Scott and Matt's office and the CO has always been the end all stop all.
I mean, realistically, usually springtime is where you're most intense.
Yes.
So it's not likely this house is gonna be sold and, sold before springtime. So hopefully, you'll be able to see, get, you know, see what happens in spring of 2024 to make sure that the mitigation, that, if we can get it through tonight, then they can actually get some of this stuff done, get some of the grass growing before the season really ends.
Right, and you're, and you're right with the septic. I mean, the tank still has to go in, the fields still have to go in. There's a fair amount of work.
Right.
We're not CO tomorrow kind of deal.
Right. And so that's why the likelihood is the house isn't gonna get sold between now and spring. So you should be able to experience this.
More material in for the septic?
It's an in-ground septic system, believe it or not.
Do they bring-
So the only-
It's solid rock there.
Again, not the engineer of Rooker done that one.
Yeah, it's solid rock, it's ledge. I'm just wondering how deep a septic system has to go to fields?
So I did question that too. And we, there are deep tests that are done out there that show seven foot of, seven foot of depth in their, in their deep test pits. So the, the primary area is actually in front of the house and the expansion area is actually up on the hillside a little bit. I believe the expansion area may need some fill, but that doesn't go in right now. The primary area goes in. So as far as material coming in for that, it's just gravel around the four inch PVC pipes.
Okay, so are they not raising that whole bed 18 inches to feet?
Believe it or not, that's in ground.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
It's all I can do now, so we will have to wait and see.
But you guys are gonna exchange information-
We're gonna become best friends.
Before you all leave. Okay. Any other comments or questions from board members?
Yes.
Yes.
So, I mean, our job here is basically about the additional fill to bring in. I do remember the whole conversation about the fill that was there and-
Making sure the calculations were correct, yeah.
Also making sure that, I remember a conversation was that the engineer was gonna look at the fill to see if it was safe, if I'm not mistaken. So apparently, none of that's been done yet.
Well, no, that's, it's been done. We just don't have the information.
We don't have it.
It's in the town engineer's court. At this point, we've, we're being told that the town engineer is satisfied with the information that he's getting and with the direction that they are going to go to solve the outstanding issues.
Because I remember the issue was with the concrete.
Right.
We didn't know where it was coming from and we kinda stopped in our tracks at that point.
So is there contact to find out that certification, that they say it's okay?
So you would go through the town engineer? You would, you would go through Scott Bryant's office and then?
Okay, in all our foils, we have not gotten that information.
Well, they know that you're, you are definitely watching this and, you know, you were noticed for tonight, so, and having at least Brian's ear for what that's worth, that's, you know, he's developing the, you know, finishing up the plan for the builder to, and hopefully, you're gonna stay on to make sure it gets done.
Definitely.
So there's questions out there, but-
There are questions, but again, it's under the-
But have nothing to do with what we're deciding to-
Right, we have to let the town engineers really be the one that, that watch this on a day-by-day basis. We can't do that.
Right, and I'm sure they're hearing this and they will be notified that there's still a concern with material on site. And ultimately, again, the belt and suspenders on this is the CO. If the town engineer says, listen, get the fill out of there and get something else in there, then-
Right.
That's what we have to do.
Right.
So we'll coordinate with, with Scott and we'll obviously keep the applicant posted.
Gotcha.
Okay, Art, good?
I'm good. Yeah, fair.
Anybody else? Okay. I'd like to, a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Okay, there is a resolution here. So let's go through this one carefully and then-
This is appeal number 4052, applicant Hispanic Industries Incorporated requesting a special permit to bring in 2,557 additional cubic yards of fill, total of 2,182 cubic yards after 375 cubic yards per year for both 2022 and 2023 pursuant to Section 194-75 of the Town Code. Resolution offered by zoning board member, appeals member Aziz Allison, whereas there is a steep drop-off at the rear yard of the property that has the potential to create safety hazards and whereas the applicant previously brought in fill to the property prior to obtaining the necessary approvals from the town and whereas the applicant's fill allegedly led to strong water runoff and damage to a neighboring property and whereas since the time of initial application, the applicant has hired a professional engineer who designed a plan to fix all drainage issues and whereas this is an unlisted action under State Environmental Quality Review Act, SECR, and whereas the legal notice was published in the Poughkeepsie Journal on February 23rd, 2023, and Southern Duchess News on October 18th, 2023, and whereas the zoning board of appeals held a public hearing on February 28th, 2023, and October 24th, 2023. Now therefore be, now therefore, as a result of the foregoing, the decision and order of the zoning board of appeals is as follows. One, this action will not result in any significant adverse environmental impact and therefore the ZBA issues a negative declaration pursuant to the State Environmental Quality Review Act, SECR. And two, this application meets the requirement of Section 194-75 of the Town Code and therefore the ZBA grants the application for a special permit for 2,557 cubic yards of fill, subject to the following conditions. A, the applicant shall submit a plan to the satisfaction of the town engineer, which includes drainage, erosion, and dust control practices prior to bringing in additional fill. B, all fill brought to the property must be clean fill without any delaterious material. C, 12 is the maximum number of loads of fill that can be brought to the property per day. D, fill may only be brought to the property between 8:00 AM and 4:00 PM on weekdays. E, fill may not be brought to the property on weekends or on holidays. And F, the applicant shall obtain a steep slope permit if necessary from the engineering department. G, the applicant shall present the project before the, before the Conservation Advisory Council CAC if required by code. H, the applicant must establish an escrow amount, account in the amount of $5,000 for the inspection by the town environmental monitor. Now therefore be it resolved that within five business days of the adoption of this resolution, the chair or other duly authorized member of the zoning board shall cause a copy of the resolution to be filed with a town clerk and a copy sent to the applicant owner. Be it further resolved that within five business days of the adoption of this resolution, the chair-
Says the same thing?
Same thing, yeah.
A little weird, okay.
It was like-
Is there a second?
Second.
Votes as follows, Aziz.
Aye.
Rockoff.
Aye.
Alberto.
Aye.
Art.
Aye.
And myself, aye.
Okay.
Your motion carries. I have to say, in my almost 13 years on this board, I think this is the longest public hearing that we've kept open. And we've had cell towers that have gone on for months, but-
But who closed it? All right, thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay. Item number two, Appeal 4080, Timothy Williams, 535 Route 376, Hopewell Junction, requesting a two-foot sideline variance and a 20-foot rear line variance for a proposed 24-foot by 16-foot or 384 square foot first floor and 336 square foot second floor, total of 720 square feet. Two-story detached garage and a, an 11-foot sideline variance for the existing dwelling, a 25-foot front line variance for an existing front covered porch, and a 6% lot coverage variance pursuant to the Schedule of Bulk Regulations of the zoning ordinance. I have a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good evening.
Hi, how are you?
I'm good, except I'm hoping you're, is the owner here with you?
He is, yeah.
He is, okay, good, thank you. Because some issues came up at the last meeting that we were hoping to get his attention to. All right, so we saw this at our last meeting. This is a house along 376 Bridge Street there that is visible from the rail trail. So I was able to do site visit myself. And the garage in the back is in pretty poor shape, so I understand totally why you need a new garage. And one line of the garage is gonna be the part of the new garage. So it makes sense, you gotta demolish this first.
Correct.
The issue came up, though, that work that has been started on the existing house there, i.e. replacing the siding, is not finished. Number one, did never permit and then started and then dragged on and on and on and your neighbors were not happy about that.
Right.
And so what we were hoping was to get some sense of, they were asking and obviously brought to our attention, some sense of how long this would take because obviously, they don't want to see something else start, especially where you're taking down a garage that was hiding things, for lack of a better word, storing things that are now gonna be visible in the yard because they're waiting for a new storage place.
In all fairness, the garage is worse than the back of the house not being finished. So I feel like, you know, what we have done, what the owner's done has secured a permit for the siding.
Oh, he did, okay.
Yep, I believe, yep.
Have the receipt right here?
Yep.
All right.
So he's in good faith, looking to move forward with this, obviously, to get that finished up. He's going to be doing it consecutively with the garage built.
That's what you suggested last night.
That's right.
We wanted to be sure about that.
And keep going, so it's all looking, it's all gonna be in kind, the same siding, same siding on the garage, same siding from the house. And obviously, he'll go through the proper channels of getting the demo permit before we even start taking that down, although it's taking itself down at this point.
So it's one way of putting it.
Yeah. So obviously, we're trying to work with the town, obviously, and make things right and get things moving in the right direction.
Okay. I, there's no question, this is gonna be an improvement to the property, so I'm not concerned about it, but you, your neighbors brought up a reasonable issue to our attention. So that's why we wanted to make sure it got to your attention.
Yep.
Okay?
And he's, he's well aware and looking to move things along.
No, no, there was a lot in the yard that really belongs to be stored for its own-
Sure.
You know, for its own maintenance and its own upkeep, et cetera. So, you know, it's a reasonable request and it's a reasonable concern that the neighbors brought forth. Comments or questions from board members?
I did a site visit and I totally agree with the chair. Property, this improvement is going to improve the property and the neighborhood. So I don't have anything else.
Is there anyone here who wishes to speak for or against the request of Timothy Williams, 535 Route 376, requesting a two-foot sideline variance and a 20-foot rear line variance for a proposed 24-foot by 16-foot first floor and second floors, or two-story detached garage? And then the other variances are just recognizing that the house was built a long time ago before some, certain codes existed, so we're just bringing it into conformance. So is there anybody else who wishes to speak? So seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Appeal number 4080, applicant Timothy Williams, name of the project, aye. A two, excuse me, a two-foot sideline variance and a 20-foot rear line variance from the requirements of Section 194-107 of the Town Code and the Schedule of Bulk Regulations for a proposed 720 square feet two-story detached garage. Second, an 11-foot sideline variance from the requirements of the, of the Schedule of Bulk Regulations for the existing dwelling. Third, a 25-front line variance from the requirements of Section 194-94 of the Town Code and the Schedule of Bulk Regulations for an existing covered front porch. And four, a 6% lot coverage variance from the requirements of the Schedule of Bulk Regulations, the variances. Location is 535 Route 376, Hopewell Junction. Tax map number 6457-01-255843. Zoning District R1 and 3. Resolution offered by the zoning board, myself, whereas the houses on properties boarding, bordering, excuse me, bordering Route 376 Bridge Street in this location have very much small, have very small yard setbacks. And whereas the applicant currently has an unsightly garage in the rear yard that will be taken down upon approval of the variances by the ZBD and whereas the applicant's representative confirmed that the detached garage will not be used as a residence and that the siding of the detached garage shall match the siding of the existing residence and whereas the neighboring property owner expressed concerns at the public hearing that the applicant had not completed siding on the house after approximately two years to do so. And whereas, when considering the variances, the ZBD, ZBA seeks to ensure that all outstanding projects at the, at the property are completed before the detached garage receives a building permit for any new projects. And whereas, this is a Type 2 action under SECR and no further review is required. And whereas the zoning board of appeals held a public hearing on September 26th and October 24th of 2023. And whereas the legal notice was published in the Southern Duchess News on September 20th, 2023. And whereas the zoning board of appeals finds that the granting of the variances will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood as the property will remain residential in nature. The desired result could not be achieved by other means due to the size and layout of the property. The variances could be deemed substantial, but the applicant lacks viable alternatives given the layout of the lot. The variances will, will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical and environmental conditions. Now therefore be it resolved that the zoning board of appeals hereby approves the request from Timothy Williams for one, a two-foot sideline variance and a 20-foot rear line variance from the, from the requirements of Section 194-107 of the Town Code and the Schedule of Bulk Regulations for a proposed 720 square feet, square foot, two-story detached garage. Second, the 11-foot sideline variance from the requirements of the Schedule of Bulk Regulations for the existing dwelling. Third, a 25-foot front line variance from the requirements of Section 194-94 of the Town Code and Schedule of Bulk Regulations for an existing, excuse me, existing covered front porch. And four, a 6% lot coverage variance from the requirements of the Schedule of Bulk Regulations, subject to the following conditions. The applicant should complete the siding on his house prior to obtaining a building permit for the detached garage.
We're gonna remove that condition because what we've heard tonight is that he's gonna do it at the same time. All right, he's gotten a permit for it, so the permit has a deadline, has an expiration date on it?
Right.
So I think we're gonna remove that first condition.
Okay.
So now it's number two becomes number one.
Right, Norma? I would just like to add, our number two, applicant shall obtain a permit for the demo.
Yeah.
And then demo. So just add that to two.
So-
Scratch that one too.
Not scratch it, but you shall obtain a permit.
To demolish and remove the remnants.
Yep, two. I'll hand, I'll hand my copy off to Jackie.
Okay. So if the detached garage does not obtain a certificate of completion for the proposed detached garage within six months of the date of the decision and order, then the applicant shall be required to appear before the ZBA at its next available meeting.
All right, let's make sure six months is gonna be reasonable. Six months from the end of October is the end of April. And that's the winter season, you're not gonna get this done. So let's make that nine months, all right? So April, May, June, July, that gives you till the end of July? Okay, so let's change that to nine months, please? Because there's just no, you're not, you've only got so much time to get, you might get the interior done, but you're not gonna get all the interior, exterior work done. No, that's fine, it's reasonable. Okay?
Okay. Be it further resolved that within five business days of the adoption of this resolution and a chair or other duly authorized member of the zoning board shall cause a copy of the resolution to be filed with the town clerk and a copy sent to the applicant owner.
Is there a second?
Second, as amended.
Okay. Votes as follows, Aziz.
Aye.
Rockoff.
Aye.
Alberto.
Aye.
Art.
Art?
Aye.
And myself, aye. Your motion carries. Now you'll deal with the building department.
That's right, thank you very much.
If you guys could please hand that off down to Jackie. All right, item number three, appeal 4069, Jessica DeRosa. I know she's not here, that's all right. We still need to act on this, though. 867 Route 376, Hopewell Junction, requesting a 126-foot front line, 93-foot left side, 61-foot right side, and 9-foot rear line variance for an existing building for a doggy daycare, and an 82-foot rear line, 127-foot left side, 101-foot right side variance for an existing fence in exercise pen pursuant to the Schedule of Bulk Regulations of the zoning ordinance. I'm just going to ask for a motion to reconvene the public hearing. Yes, no?
So moved.
So moved, thank you. Is there a second to reconvene?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So we are reopened on this, okay? Jessica's not here, she did not need to be here. The issue is that, at our last meeting, we were told that the planning board took action to not declare themselves lead agency, but their intent to become lead agency. And so we passed a resolution to acknowledge and allow them to be lead agency. Well, the applicant hadn't circulated for lead agency yet. So while the planning board allowed her to, she hadn't actually done the paperwork, so our resolution really doesn't make sense. We need to do a new resolution tonight that acknowledges receipt of the intent of the planning board to be lead agency. So we have to rescind last month's resolution and issue it tonight so that it has the right day, falls within the 30 days of notice for the planning board. That's the intent of tonight. And then, we can't do actually anything on this application until the planning board has handled the SECRA issues.
So I make a motion that we rescind the...
September 26th.
September 26th resolution and offer a resolution today making planning board the lead agency.
Second.
Good, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, good. So planning board should be all set for them to be able to handle it. Is there anyone who wishes to speak for or against the application of Jessica DeRosa, 867 Route 376? Recognizing we are not closing the public hearing, we will continue it, but we have to allow the planning board to take their action. So seeing none, do I have a motion to adjourn the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, good. Thank you, everyone.
Does it have a date?
No, because we have to allow the planning board, and I don't know whether the 30 days is, works with their November meeting. I just don't know what's going to happen. If not, we won't get to it till January, so... Okay, item number four. Appeal 4085, Matthew Palladino, 42 Julie Drive, Hopewell Junction, requesting an 18-foot sideline variance for a proposed 28-foot by 14-foot or 392 square foot detached garage pursuant to the Schedule of Bulk Regulations of the zoning ordinance. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good evening.
Hi.
So we had an opportunity to meet with you last month to see, you know, to talk through your application.
My wife.
Your wife, that's right.
Didn't go well.
Because I was going to say, I didn't recognize you, but...
I had to go out of town unexpectedly, and she came ill-prepared. So, thank you.
You should be proud of her, she did a great job.
I told her, I said, "Just go and smile, I have to go." I didn't want to give her all the information, like, make it worse, so I said, "I'll come back with accurate information."
And so, you know, she explained, well, we kind of went through the application with her, what the issues were. You've got some bit of a steep, some bit of slope issues on your property, so...
No, it's not an issue, just, I have pictures.
Oh, okay, that's helpful.
If you want to see kind of what I'm up to.
Okay.
So, you guys have the timeline, right, like the survey?
Right.
So here's the... So if you're looking from the road, you guys, I have no...
Yeah, we, this is what we have, is the survey.
Right, so if you're looking from the road, the whole idea is this rock wall here, it'll be back here, so...
So your driveway's on the other side.
Right, it's over there.
But you're proposing to put this, oh, because it's not really a shed, it's not really a garage, it's more of a shed, but we have to call it a garage.
Right. So I nestled it back there, so this is like, the road's over here.
And we talked about that lean-to...
Well, that's...
Aziz asked about that, it was shown as like, right, as a lean-to kind of thing, but it's really to store wood.
Like, on purpose, I would have stuck it back there.
Right.
You can't see it, and then, you know, neighbors above us, it's like 40 feet up.
Right.
So it's not an issue, I'm just going to...
No, you're tucking it in, so it's going to have the least visibility, so... Okay, so you have neighbors that are, have you spoken with your neighbors?
No, I haven't invited them in.
Okay.
And then, do you want to zoom into that? Because I know it's difficult to see on...
No, it's all right, I think we're good.
It's fine.
We're good.
All right. So, does that kind of make sense?
Yep. So are there any comments or questions from board members?
I'm good, I'm good.
You can go back to the microphone.
I have no...
Hold on.
A question.
Okay, so now, hold on. So now, is there anyone here who wishes to speak for or against the request of, let me go back, Matthew Palladino, 42 Julie Drive, Hopewell Junction, requesting an 18-foot sideline variance for a proposed 28-foot by 14-foot detached garage? If you'd like to, you're welcome to go to the microphone.
Okay.
Yep.
I just, name is Harry Lindo Rodriguez. We live at 44, right, right, right next door.
Okay.
I need to, I need to ask Matt here exactly, based on where our property line is, right?
Right.
In terms of, from where, from that distance over, where is he actually going to put this? He never showed us anything, so I'm just curious.
So he's got pictures.
It's on the other side.
What?
It's on the other side.
What do you mean?
It's on the other side of the...
Oh.
It's not on the side of his driveway? It's actually on the other side.
So that's all I want to know here, that's all.
Aren't you glad you came? See?
No, eventually him and I would have talked anyway, right?
Well, if it was next to your house, I would have told you. No, it's by Michael's house.
Oh, is it?
Yeah.
Oh, cool.
You know where the firewood is?
Yeah, of course.
You just take it back in that corner.
That's fine, all right, we're...
Harry, I would have told you.
We're fine, we're fine.
Thank you for joining us this evening.
Thank you.
That was way too easy. I think the first one's the easiest, but I can't really follow that up, so...
Oh, hold on.
No, I'm just curious as to what, what is its purpose, like?
Storage.
Just storage.
It's not really a garage, it's just because of the type of door he's putting on it, that's why the town has to call it a garage.
It just sounds huge.
It is.
It is.
It is. Because going up in the attic, it's like ridiculous, so we put a roll up on it, it's just easier to work out, a couple hundred bucks difference. So instead of having like double doors, so...
So, and how are you going to gain access to this? Like, some type of, like a V, just walk?
No, no, it's a storage shed.
It's not really a garage.
It's only called a garage
It's being called a garage.
Because it's got a garage door on it. So it's not a garage.
Okay. All right, I thought, you know, based on its size, you know, there's a shed.
Right.
And then...
It's a shed with a garage door, which makes it a...
Yeah, it's a big, it's a big shed, but it's not.
Big shed.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, I mean...
28 feet by 14 feet, it's a big shed.
It's got a lot of stuff in there.
We were at a curiosity, but now that we know where it's going.
You can ask these guys, they come around here.
You got, yeah, what kind of goodies he's got.
I travel a lot.
All right. Can we ask one of you or both of you to just sign in just so that we have your name for the record, please?
Here?
Yes, please, thank you.
Sure.
All right, so nobody else here to speak for this application? So do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Rocco, you want to go?
Hold on one second, Matt's got a question.
Matt?
Yes.
Did you close out the generator yet?
Yeah, so I called, I reminded her today. And you called the pressure test, she called the leak test, whatever she said.
Right.
Exactly, she said she's going to email it to me.
Okay. And then we just have to renew it and do a final inspection.
Good, so, exactly, you guys have to have it.
I think so. Okay, all we need you guys to sign in, that you guys are done. Thank you for coming.
And thank you for your service. You guys...
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, wait, I'm sorry, I had a lot...
Well, he doesn't have his approval from us yet.
Oh. You made us onto this, but thank you, I appreciate your class management.
So what do I, they received the electrical inspection today?
All right.
Came in on August.
So we close the public hearing?
So that's it.
Yeah, we did.
Resolution.
When you called the pressure test.
Am I ready?
We're ready.
Appeal number 4085, applicant is Matthew Palladino.
Matthew?
The project is an 18-foot sideline variance from the requirements of Section 194-107 and the Schedule of Bulk Regulations for a proposed 28-foot by 14-foot, total 392 square feet, detached garage located at 42 Julie Drive in Hopewell Junction, zoning District R1, and the resolution is offered by zoning board member Rocco Limetone. Whereas the proposed detached garage would be used for additional storage, and whereas the proposed detached garage is similar to a shed, screened from neighboring properties by existing vegetation, and it will match the siding of the house. And whereas this is a Type II action under SECRA, and no further review is required. And whereas the zoning board of appeals held a public hearing on October 24th, 2023, and whereas the legal notice was published in the Southern Duchess News on October 18th, 2023, and whereas the zoning board of appeals finds that the granting of the variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood as the property will remain residential in nature. The desired result could not be achieved by other means due to the size of the property. The variance could be deemed substantial, but the applicant lacks viable alternatives given the layout of the lot. The variance will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions. Now therefore, be it resolved that the zoning board of appeals hereby approves the request from Matthew Palladino for an 18-foot sidelines variance from the requirements of Section 194-107 and the Schedule of Bulk Regulations for a proposed 28-foot by 14-foot, total 392 square feet detached garage. Be it further resolved that within five business days of the adoption of this resolution, the chair or other duly authorized member of the zoning board shall cause a copy of the resolution to be filed with the town clerk and copy sent to the applicant owner.
Is there a second?
Second.
Votes as follows: Aziz?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
Alberto?
Aye.
Art?
Aye.
And myself, aye. Your motion carries.
Thanks, I appreciate it.
Now you can tell them when you'll start.
They can just come, they can go next door. Two questions, deciding, I mean, it's almost the exact same color, but it's not deciding, it's a little nicer than T111, and it's called like a smart shed.
Yeah, that's fine.
So it's not exact, but we're going to make it nice and match.
Complimentary, at least, you know?
We don't, yeah, we keep everything nice. We'll put privates up and make it, okay. And then, how long do I have? Because I might like drag my feet till the spring, so I'm not rushing.
Three days, at least.
When the permit, when the permit is issued, it'll be good for one year.
Okay, good, so I got...
Our approval doesn't expire.
Good, okay.
Okay.
Thank you. And then I will, I'll bring that to you, I'll bring it to you this week, as long as...
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you guys very much. Have a good night.
Good. Take care.
All right. Item number five, appeal 4086, Robert Coulter, 89 Townsend Road, Hopewell Junction, requesting a 450-square-foot size variance for a proposed 40-foot by 30-foot or 1,200-square-foot detached garage pursuant to the Schedule of Bulk Regulations of the zoning ordinance. The footprint of the existing house is 1,200 square feet. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.